Good evening, and welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting. It is October 8th. I'm Sue Crane, Supervisor of the Town. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is a business meeting, and the evening that we review the Town Supervisor's Report and the Town Clerk's Report. This is the Town of Red Hook's monthly statement of the Supervisor ending -- the books ending September 30th, 2013. To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook pursuant to Section 119 of the Town Law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the Supervisor during the month. The grand totals are $3,339,264.56 for the opening balance. The receipts were $225,138.51. Dispersed was $305,209.93, leaving a balance of $3,259,193.14. In the back of the packet, you will see there is just one fund budget adjustment, and the total appropriations were reduced by $12,000, and we increased the appropriations in that like amount. And you can see the detail of that. And that -- those are all the budget adjustments. Since we're going to talk about purchase of development rights and community preservation fund, it's instructive every month to see where we are with that. And in terms of the community preservation transfer tax amount, it is listed as $323,744.48. And that raises incrementally as we receive those transfer taxes on properties that are over the county median sales price. The above is a true and correct accounting of the balances shown in the books of the Town of Red Hook at the close of business on September 30th. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second.
Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ah, thank you. Okay, Sue McCann, have a Town Clerk's Report?
Town Clerk Monthly Report, September 1st through September 30th, 2013. Total local shares remitted to Supervisor for town revenue, Amount remitted to New York State Ag and Markets for the spade and neuter program, $66. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $247.50. And amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $7,587.63, for a total state, county, and local revenue of $9,789.12. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the Town Law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. And I also have two abstracts to read. One is for August 2013, and this is for vouchers 16528 through 16688. From the General A, $63,410.72. The General B, $29,209.42. The Highway DB, $178,223.1. Highway Garage Demolition, $17,722.51. Fire, SF Fire, $4,775.71. SL Lighting, $2,108.48. SW Water O and M, $9,495.54, for a total abstract of $303,548.64. I hereby certify that vouchers numbered 16528 through 16688 processed in the month of August 2013 are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the Town Board. Signed, Sue McCann, Town Clerk. The next one we're going to do is September of 2013, and this is for vouchers 16689 through 16760. The General A is $20,228.56. General B, $1,917.39. Highway DB, $50,655.7. Capital Improvement Sisem Rose Bridge, $325.97. Capital Highway Garage New, $12,897.50. Highway Garage Demolition, $7,676.90. SW Water O and M, $2,126.40, for a total abstract of $95,827.79. And I hereby certify that the vouchers numbered 16689 through 16760 processed in the month of September are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the Town Board. And I just have one quick little announcement. The Dutchess County Department of Health is hosting a free rabies clinic, and this is at the Stanford Firehouse in Stanfordville. It takes place October 24th, which is a Thursday, and that's from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. It's free rabies vaccinations for cats, dogs, and ferrets, but you have to be a Dutchess County resident, and it's $10 for non-residents. It just says dogs must be leashed, and cats and ferrets must be carriers. So if anybody needs more information, you can contact me at the Town Hall.
Okay, Sue.
Sure.
Starting with Jim, do you have any announcements, Jim?
No, I don't.
Okay. Brenda, have you any?
No, I don't.
Okay. Harry?
No.
And, number go. Just a brief one for me, and that is to let everyone in the public know that this is a meeting, probably the most meetings we have in any given month, in the month of October, because this is the period of time that the Board wrestles with the budget and tries to commend with a fair and honest budget for the town. And we are obliged to do that before the Thursday following the general election in November. So we generally plan these weekly. This year, we happen to be having one Thursday, the 10th, that's this week, at 7:30 here at Town Hall. Monday, the 21st, again at 7:30 here in the courtroom. Tuesday, the 29th, and that will be a special Town Board meeting to set the public hearing. And Wednesday, the 6th, will be the budget special public hearing meeting. That gives us three full meetings of time to look at the preliminary budget, make a preliminary budget, and have a public hearing as the law requires. And we will then need to file that public document either the night that we adopt it, or at least no later than November 20th. So the budget calendar is very specific, and we intend to follow the letter of the law in that regard. The other thing that's important, I think, to remind people is that there is a program called Rebuilding Together. And the agency Rebuilding Together has recently extended the deadline for the 2014 Building Day application to October 31st. And this allows people who are interested in availing themselves of the services of Rebuilding Together to complete the necessary filings. And you can get those applications from Rebuilding Together on the website, rebuildingtogether. You should know that this is not an emergency repair program, but it is a group of volunteers who do repairs on homes throughout Dutchess County, and they do it with -- if the homeowner qualifies, and I believe last year we had a qualified homeowner receive those services. So look for rebuildingtogether online, or call us, and we'll make sure that you will find out how to get that application. The deadline is October 31st. And that's pretty much all I have for announcements tonight. We'll spend the next 15 minutes or so on public comment. Is there any public comment, either having to do with tonight's agenda or anything that's on your mind? None? That's amazing. That's a good thing, I guess. Public comment, anyone? Okay, hearing none. I think we can move right into the agenda, and what we'll do is try to follow the public hearing hours which were designated starting at 8 o'clock. So we have about 15 minutes to do some business. And I'd like to know if either Brenda or Harry would like to read this beautiful dedication of a resolution in honor of Ruth OJ, who served the town faithfully for many years, and they worked on it together. So I'm going to let you toss a coin and decide who's going to read it.
Brenda worked with her so long, let Brenda.
Brenda, that's great. Thank you. Thank you. She's --
So, "The Town of Red Hook Resolution Honoring Ruth OJ, Red Hook Rotary Citizen of the Year 2013. Whereas Ruth OJ dedicated herself to preserving the environment of the Town of Red Hook for its residents and generations to come, and whereas she recognized the natural resources of Red Hook and worked to preserve them for the future, and whereas she was chairperson of the Conservation Advisory Council for 25 years and a member from 1977 through 2004, and whereas she set in place CAC initiatives to monitor streams, inventory, and preserve historic resources, and provide camp scholarships for Red Hook students, whereas she led Memphis and Noe in its successful campaign to prevent the construction of a power plant, and worked tirelessly to prevent the sighting of an ash fill-in Red Hook, and whereas she was the leader in creating the town's recycling center in 1982, and whereas her many years of advocacy for issues that are important to the people of Red Hook have earned her community-wide and regional admiration, now therefore be it resolved that -- it's in Sue's name that I, Sutie Crane, Supervisor of the Town of Red Hook, together with the Town Board, acknowledge and commend Ruth OJ for her selfless work and for receiving the well-deserved honor of Red Hook's Rotary Citizen of the Year 2013, and authorize this resolution to be passed to commemorate this achievement, and it's dated today. And no one could be more deserving of this award."
She was a faithful servant as long as I've ever been involved, and that's been, I hate to say how many years, and well-respected by everyone who knew her work. Jim, you go back as far as Ruth does, I think. You were liaison to the CAC, right?
Yeah, I was actually on the CAC in the '70s.
You were on the CAC?
Yeah.
Look what's happened to you after.
Just a few years ago.
Isn't that great? That's great. So you knew her well, too.
Yep. And I was a kid, actually.
I grew to know and respect Ruth as a Town Board member when I first came on, as a woman who, once she made up her mind, she went for something, and she continued until she made her point, and very seldom buried in her strength of resolve. So it was wonderful to learn from her, and I think all of us who knew her realized well that she -- we hired a professional planner, planning group, to write, and this is often the case, a consultant to help us construct what we needed for the open space plan. But in point of fact, Ruth OJ was the one who wrote the open space plan, and together with Marcia Pell and Beth Mead, the three of them sat at that table and agonized over every word in that open space plan. And I remember seeing Ruth physically write by hand in beautiful penmanship the words of that document that was finally passed by the Town Board. So this town owes her a great debt of gratitude. Did we say -- did we say?
We didn't move yet.
We moved it?
Oh, we didn't.
I would like to move the motion.
My second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And we can all put our signature on that tonight. That will be presented to Ruth at the dinner next Tuesday?
On the 22nd.
22nd. Tuesday, the 22nd, at the Firehouse. And I'm sure Harry would be happy to take your money and any other Rotarian.
Tickets are available here, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
You have some in Town Hall, or from any member of Rotary, I being one. I don't have any with me, but I can get them.
Just let him know. He'd be happy to do that. Okay, we'll -- I think we'll cover the business in the back of the agenda if we can, because it's not quite 8 o'clock, and we'd like to kind of stick to that timetable. There is a resolution behind Tab 6 in your folder of authorizing the Town Clerk to advertise a request for sealed bids for purchase of a conveyor-type hopper-body spreader for salt and sand. Have you all got that in front of you?
Yeah.
So Harry, you're the liaison. Would you like to read that for us?
Whereas the Highway Superintendent of the Town of Red Hook has requested that the town proceed with advertising for a conveyor-type hopper-body spreader pursuant to specifications substantially in the form on file with the Town Clerk. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook does hereby authorize and direct the Town Clerk to advertise for requests for sealed bids as directed by the Highway Superintendent in accordance with the foregoing specifications. Let me see what I -- okay. And those specifications, in case someone here or out there in the Town of Red Hook, requesting bids for the purchase of a hydraulically-powered, controlled, all-purpose conveyor-type hopper-body spreader for salt and sand for the Highway Department, Town of Red Hook, New York. The specifications are on file here and can be obtained in the Clerk's office should someone want to bid. I so move that we pass this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. There was a request from the Highway Superintendent that we consider declaring one of the vehicle's surplus equipment. And you'll see behind Tab 7 the information regarding that. Teresa, do you want to just talk about that, since you wrote this really succinct statement?
The Town of Red Hook Highway Department has a used 2001 Dodge 2500 pickup truck with plow. It has been deemed no longer of use to the town, and we are asking that it be declared surplus. The Village of Red Hook has offered to purchase the vehicle. We have confirmed with Chris Shaw, the Town Attorney, that this intermunicipal sale purchase can be made without going out too big. The town shall not warranty the condition. The purchaser shall hold the Town of Red Hook harmless from any claims or injuries arising from the purchaser operations or use of the vehicle or equipment. All items purchased shall have all Town of Red Hook markings, lettering, and decals removed prior to the pickup of the items. So we're asking that you declare this surplus so we can move along.
Anyone? Motion?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Teresa. Before we move into the public hearing, we'll start with the first one, which was advertised for 8 o'clock, Local Law G, which would authorize the Town Board to override the 2% tax levy. I think I would like to just say that, for me, overriding the New York State 2% is difficult, but I feel that the work that we have done and the money that we have committed to doing what probably three Town Boards before us, four Town Boards before us, believe is the right thing to do, which is to bond for money when we have to for open space and farmland protection, to maintain a capital equipment inventory, which is so important, because if we don't do that, if we don't borrow money that will be a benefit to residents for the future, because these vehicles, some of them last 10 years, and one taxing year should not bear all of that expense. So we spread it out over the 10-year period or the life of the vehicle. If we don't do that, if we don't have a capital plan, we end up at some point, and we've had it happen to us, where we have aged vehicles, and we have to borrow a huge amount of money all at once and suffer for not having had that plan. So we've been very, in the past five years, we've been very, very diligent. And Rose Rider, the Budget Officer, has been hugely successful in helping us follow the plan, to look at all of the major capital equipment purchases that we need to make, and the committed monies for bonding for infrastructure, and plan it so that we don't have these huge spikes that all at once we need so much money, and then for a couple of years we can ride along, and we say, "Oh, isn't it great? We didn't have to raise any more taxes this year because we didn't have to spend any." And then there's another huge spike, and it's brutal on the budget when that happens. So what we're trying to do is maintain a relatively level budget that is reasonable, that is responsible, and addresses those issues. So I just needed to get that out, because it is a budget month, and we're going to be talking about some of those expenses tonight. And I wanted to make sure that I went on record, and I believe the Town Board is with me, in the importance of that philosophy in budgeting. So I think we're close enough. Look, that clock says two minutes. My watch says one minute, so I think we'll go ahead with the open the public hearing to hear comment on the local law which will allow the Town Board, if necessary, to override the New York State's suggested 2% tax levy limit for 2014. Is there any public comment in that regard?
Do you want me to read the notice?
That would be good.
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on Tuesday, October 8th, 2013, at 8:00 p.m. local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, to hear all interested persons on a proposed Local Law G, proposed of 2013, entitled "A Local Law to Override the Tax Levy Limit for Fiscal Year 2014." This local law is intended to permit the Town Board to override the tax levy limit on the amount of property taxes that may be levied by the Town of Red Hook pursuant to General Municipal Law Section 3-C, and to allow the town to adopt a budget for fiscal year 2014 that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit as defined by Section 3-C of the General Municipal Law. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated September 5th, 2013, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook. And this was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal, the Daily Freeman, posted on the Town Website, posted at the Town Hall, and also sent and posted at the Two Villages.
Thank you, Sue. So I'd like to declare the public hearing open and take public comment on that proposal. Is there any public comment?
Sue, I guess I'd like to make a comment.
Okay. Could you use the microphone so that we can hear you clearly? Thank you, Ken. Thank you.
Okay, we all right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I haven't followed your need for this 2% tax increase. However, personally, I have a lot of confidence in you folks, all of you, and collectively that you are applying for this increase due to some wise decisions you've made that you need this money. But I'd like to know specifically what the money might be earmarked for. And was this year increase what it might be earmarked for, other than just in the general budget? And again, I have a lot of confidence in the Board, that you folks are on top of these activities, and you will continue to advise us in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. And of course, the public hearing, we will be by the end of the month, Ken, end of, I think it's the Wednesday of, the last Wednesday of October, or the last Tuesday of October, let's see what that date is. Wednesday, Tuesday, the 29th, is our commitment to have a preliminary budget that will go to public hearing. And the public, so from that date forward, you will have a week and a half or two to look at the budget that the Board is proposing, and then come to the public hearing on the Wednesday after Election Day. I can tell you the date of that. That's 6th of November, November 6th. It's a Wednesday. And at that time, we will go through the budget, answer any questions in a public hearing, and we have the opportunity and time from that point forward to change it if the public feels that we're on the wrong track, or they feel that we should be, the budget should be amended in any way. So, but that will be the night that we will hear from the public. Okay? So it's Wednesday, the 6th of November, when the preliminary budget is what the entire Board feels we want to bring forward as our proposal. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. We have, Art, don't go away.
We have to. We didn't.
Yeah. Oh, we haven't closed the public hearing, did we?
No, and we also have to vote on the law.
Yeah, we have to wait. Yeah, so we can close. Yeah, so we can close the public hearing now and you-
Just one more time for anybody else since somebody just spoke.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay. Is there anyone else who has a comment? Okay. In which case, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We need to pass every motion.
So, I think I have it here. Let me propose that this to Harry. So this is the resolution dated tonight, October 8th, 2013, authorizing the adoption by the town board of the Town of Red Hook of local law G, proposed of 2013, to be known as local law number seven of 2013 regarding 2014 property tax cap override. Whereas local law G, entitled "Local Law to Override the Tax Levy Limit for Fiscal Year 2014," was presented to the town board at a regular meeting on September 5th, and the resolution was adopted by the town board on September 5th, 2013, setting the public hearing. It was advertised. The public hearing was duly held on this date, October 8th. And whereas the proposed local law is a type II action which has been determined under SICER not to have significant effect on the environment, the town board has duly deliberated, finds it's in the best interest of the town to adopt said local law. Now therefore be resolved by the town board of the Town of Red Hook, Dutchess County, New York, as follows, that the town board hereby adopts local law G, proposed of 2013, now referred to as local law number seven of 2013, entitled "The Local Law to Override the Tax Levy Limit for Fiscal Year 2014," in the form attached heretofore and made part of this resolution. And that the town clerk is directed to enter the local law in the minutes of the meeting and in the town code of the Town of Red Hook to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of the State and take all other actions as may be required by the law. And I so move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to just spend a couple of minutes because we have the time and need to use the time before we open the public hearing at 8:15, to each of us, however you wish, to town board, speak about the relationships that we have had with the land trusts and land conservancies over the past 10 years. We've, I believe, developed a plan whereby we have been successful in closing on some conservation easements that at many points in our 10 years looked like they would be impossible to do. And so I would like each of you to just make a comment about the success of the program and the amazing results we've had from our relationships and our partnerships with the three land trusts in Dutchess County, Winnicke Land Trust, Dutchess Land Conservancy, and scenic Hudson. And so, Bill, do you want to start?
Well, I'm sure I can submit that, you know, since at least 2004, when I've been involved in the subject of conservation and land development, there was always, you know, a sense in the town among the citizens and the groups that, like the CAC and, you know, Ruth O'Jays and world, injected into the community a sense of purpose to try to protect the environment and the land. But in those early years, many of us who worked tried to implement a lot of those ideas, obviously found you can't do it all by yourself, you know? You can't do it necessarily just by the community itself, volunteers, even a few paid professionals. And along the way, of course, we became familiar with the land trust that you mentioned and that, in my opinion, has made it possible for Red Hook, I think, to be successful in that area. And I think we've enjoyed a good working relationship back and forth. But, you know, it's business. It's not, you know, the old boys club. It's a business deal. And you've got to give and you have to take and you have to make proposals and you have to make offers that people can't refuse, so to speak. And I think that's all been the result, the success that we've had has been the result of the input by those land conservancies. So definitely are very much indebted to them.
Thank you, Bill. Harry?
Basically, I guess I consider it a legacy thing. Having lived in New York City and many other places around the country as a city, in my cityite days, it was great to have fresh produce and there was always a produce shop down the corner. And that's a few decades ago. Some of our farmers, in fact, were starting to come to the city with food markets. And I guess I see us here in the Hudson Valley as the breadbasket of quality food that will go to people both here in the Valley and down throughout the city, New York City. They perhaps Albany as well. But as a resource, we have preserved, I feel as though we've preserved a way of life in two ways. A way of life in terms of the quality of food that's available and within 100-mile areas, radius of where we are. And we've preserved a community that is a major farming community. Every chance I get, I live in Tivoli, and I'm hearing this building often. My way home is through the farms. It's just great to see the farms, the farmers, the workers, and the product that is created there. And it's great to have the land available and I celebrate our farmers for the work that they do and what they do provide to our culture.
Thank you, Harry. Brenda?
I guess I think about how important the partnerships have been as well and how many people in the town have participated in these efforts. I mean, from the very first planning documents of the town, we always see how important everybody held the agricultural lands to be. They've always been of utmost importance. And I think of the citizens who pushed for, pushed the town to adopt policies that make this possible and the land trusts, of course, and partners that we haven't mentioned, like the county and the state and the feds. So I think it's really important to appreciate everybody coming together toward this effort.
Thank you.
And, you know, is this the time that we would like to mention that one of our programs has sunset and it was a very large portion of our success?
Mm-hmm. You could do that.
Okay. And that's the PDR program that allowed us to preserve. I just looked it up the other day because it had been such a big part of our effort for the last 10 years. And now that tool has expired, but of course we have the CPF tool that is doing such a great job for us. But we had saved four, five, I think, different farms through the PDR program and more than 700 acres, and I just think that deserved mention. We spent less than, we were allowed to spend $3.5 million. The town bonded less than $2.5 million and preserved over 700 acres. So with that, under $2.5 million, we leveraged that money to purchase many millions of dollars worth of farmland or to keep it under conservation easement. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Brenda. And Jim?
Not to be repetitive, but as Brenda said, starting with our original PDR program and working with the different land trusts, I feel we as a town have been probably more successful than any other town in saving open space and saving our prime farmland, all the way from one of the original, which was going back to the Steiner Farm and all the way up through, you know, the Curly Corners Consortium, the Mead Farm, and many others, and all the way up to today where we're having public hearings on the Kasicki Farm and the Close Farm. And I applaud these gentlemen for joining the crowd and doing that as well.
Thank you. See how easy it is to get this done? You just, everybody agrees. But it is true that it's been a wonderful effort and it's not been without silent workers who are residents of the town. And one of them is here tonight, who has been willing to chair the Community Preservation Fund Committee, which assesses each parcel, whether it be farmland or not, and with a group of people, looks very carefully with standards that each person evaluates singularly and then pulls with the group to determine which are the most important assets to protect because there's a limited amount of community preservation fund to go around. And once it's spent, it takes a while to accrue more. And Susan Israti, who is a trustee of the Board of Tivoli, has done a wonderful job and you'll be hearing some of her work later as we start this process with two very important preservations. I am going to recuse for the first one, which can now happen. It is a little after 8 o'clock, 8:15, I'm sorry. And it, there's nothing peculiar about it. It's just that my family and I had a farm and had a business relationship with the owner of this farm. And I would prefer to recuse and let the board carry this. And Dr. Ross will conduct this hearing. Thank you, Jim.
Do you want me to read the public hearing notice?
Yeah, I was going to ask you to just go ahead and say it. You could go ahead and start reading the public notice.
Because it's kind of long.
Give some brief summary.
That's right. Notice of public hearing regarding purchase of development right projects at Kasicki Farm and Close Farm in the Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the Town of Red Hook on October 8th, 2013, at 8:15 PM local time for the Kasicki Farm described below and 8:30 PM local time for the Close Farm described below at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, pursuant to the town's Preservation Fund Program, CPF Program, in Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended. To hear all interested persons regarding the acquisition of an interest or right in real property to preserve open space pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law, including the purchase of a contractual right necessary to achieve the purposes of such provisions for each such project. With respect to each of the projects described below, the town's proposed project partners, the scenic Hudson Land Trust and Dutchess Land Conservancy, together intend to apply for 50% match funding for acquisition costs under the USDA Farm and Ranch Land Protection Program, with additional match funding proposed to be provided by the scenic Hudson Land Trust, Inc. The town share is not to exceed 25% of the acquisition costs and 50% of the estimated additional project-related costs for the CPF Program for each project and is proposed to be financed from the CPF Program. Kasicki Farm Cattle, Inc., application submitted by Kasicki Farm Cattle, Inc. for acquisition of a conservation easement or third-party enforcement right in a conservation easement proposed to be held by Dutchess Land Conservancy with respect to approximately 74.105 acre parcel of property. Tax map ID number 6172-00-875153-0000. Located at Rockabye Road, Town of Red Hook, Dutchess County, New York. The total project cost, including proposed program partner funding, is estimated not to exceed $476,470, with the town share estimated not to exceed $127,360. Close Farm, application submitted by Close Family Farm LLC for acquisition of a conservation easement or a third-party enforcement right in a conservation easement proposed to be held by Dutchess Land Conservancy with respect to approximately 103.19 acre parcel of property. Tax map ID number 6372-00-070930-0000. Located at 81 Echo Valley Road, Town of Red Hook, Dutchess County, New York. The total project cost, including proposed program partner funding, is estimated not to exceed $675,580, with the town share estimated not to exceed $177,435. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the town board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. Please take further notice that copies of said applications are available for review at the office of the town clerk, Red Hook, Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. By order of the town board of the Town of Red Hook dated September 5th, 2013, Sue McCann, Town of Red Hook.
And that was a public notice for both public hearings. The first public hearing that we are hearing right now is the Kasicki Farm. We'll do that one first.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
These are copies of smaller versions of the maps that we have for this.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So Art will discuss the resources of the Kasicki Farm cattle property. I just want to make note that comments from the town board were so wonderful and kind of caught the whole capture, at least from our experience of working in Red Hook since about 1998. And to get to this point certainly has evolved into a very complex but fruitful set of partnerships between the land trusts in the town and the county and the state and the federal agencies who have participated and the landowners who have been willing to work in these programs and support agriculture in the Town of Red Hook. So in that context, it's really exciting to present the Kasicki Farm cattle property for your consideration and for public hearing this evening.
Thank you, Carrie. And also on the note of your previous comments, I wish I had brought with me the map that I had prepared for the Cornell Cooperative Extension Bus Tour tomorrow, which shows all of the purchase of development projects that have happened so far in Dutchess County along with the donated easements and so on. And there's a big concentration of them in Red Hook and then the rest of them sort of are spread around the rest of the county. But it really shows that I'm acting judiciously, but also striking while the iron is hot, the Town of Red Hook has managed to leverage a lot of money from other sources to match what it's spent itself and has a resident of the town, I think wisely sat. So another time I'll show you that.
Thank you.
The Kasicki Farm cattle, Inc. property, or Kasicki Farm, is approximately a 74-acre property. It's located on, it has road frontage on Middle Road and, sorry, Rokeby Road. And it also is, but it's highly visible from Middle Road. And on the map that we have turned away from almost everyone in the audience, it might go that way just a little bit. go that way just a little bit if you.
You can show that to the audience and not us, because we have, we each have our own map here.
Exactly. On that map, it shows the location of the farm. And the property is owned by Mr. Frank Bosberg, who's in the audience tonight. Thank you for coming. And I believe with his daughter. And the property was part of a larger property that was part of the family farm. And this is being considered as an independent property because Mr. Bosberg brought it to us in that way. Like all properties that Dutchess Land Conservancy and Sinek Hudson works on, we met with landowners, with the landowners early in the process, and we took a very close look at the natural resources on the property. And especially for purchasing agricultural development rights, the property has, 63% of the property is classified by the National Resources Conservation Service as having prime or statewide important farmland soils. All of the areas shown in yellow on the map are classified as having those high-quality soils. And intuitively speaking, walking the property, it seems like more of them should be characterized as said frankly. But, and the best farming soils on the property for crops are located on the east areas that are closest to Rokee Road and to Middle Road. And as one goes further to the west, this land, the soils and the land is more suitable for pasture or for hay. And there's slightly elevation changes as one goes to that. And there, in the center of the property, there is a segment of DEC Classified Stream that runs all the way north to south. And there is also a DEC Regulated Wetland in the center of the property, as well as several federal wetlands. And the Zone 1 aquifer did not show up very well on this map. Does it show up on what we gave you?
I think so.
Yes. All of the relatively flat area that I call the best farming soils on the property also overlies what is considered to be a zone categorized by Dutchess County as a Zone 1 aquifer. That means that this is the most important area of groundwater recharge on the property. It means that when rain falls, it more or less permeates directly into the ground and the groundwater. And then there's a lesser important area of aquifer in the center of the property. But essentially, this area is extremely important for groundwater recharge. When we look at this from a planning perspective, we use the information about the soil types and the wetlands to consider where it may be best to locate improvements on the property that the conservation easement might allow in the future. Now, through a process of working with the landowner and going back and forth and so on, we developed a proposed plan for the conservation easement. And that includes an area of resource protection area that includes all of the wetlands plus a buffer area. And then it includes, in this case, a farmstead, the farmstead complex is the area where most of the development, any kind of residential structures and most farm structures would be required to go. And there's a two-and-a-half acre farmstead complex that surrounds the property's existing structure, which is a farm market farm stand. And then there's, the farmstead complex is split into a second area with a two-acre area of farmstead complex that's in the very rear of the property. And that was reached in by a thorough process of discussions with the landowner and thinking about, with the objective to keep the residential use away from the best soils while allowing the farm stand to be accessible and close to the road, and also, but also keeping it out of areas of the farm that we thought were most likely to be used for farming purposes and to cluster, to cluster it relatively speaking with the existing development that already exists on Overlook Drive to the west. And it's also relatively close proximity to where the farmstead complex is on the nearby Columbia property.
So I will.
One last thing to notice is that the property is, was rated as a three-tier property in the Conservation Preservation Plan, but because it belongs to a number-two property, it has a number-two ranking according to the plan.
And at a previous Town Board meeting, Mrs. Israti had made a comment, we've witnessed on that, the Joint CPF Farmland Protection Committee on that point. So it's really exciting that this parcel ranks so highly relative to those others identified in the Community Preservation Project Plan. And I think Art noted, but I just want to point out this well here, that all of this land to the north of Kasicki Farm cattle is the Kalina Farm, which was part of a 2012 round project. That was a partnership between the Town and Sinek Hudson, and that shows up on your context map. I'll draw your attention to the last page of the handouts, which we don't have in large format. This details the acquisition costs and the project costs for this project, along with the one that follows, but they're broken out individually. A few places where this is slightly different than the previous projects we've brought to you in the last few years, which is that we don't have surveys completed yet, so our acreages are estimates based on tax parcels or GIS. And so therefore, there is a small grain of salt that goes with those, that we will have exact purchase prices once we have the exact survey acreage. This project, along with the other that will come in the next public hearing after it, would be numbers 10 and 11 of those that have been funded by the USDA in the Town of Redhook that we, Sinek Hudson and the Dutchess Land Conservancy have done in partnership. So just for a bit of context, out of 27 conservation easements that Sinek Hudson has been involved with since in 2011 that have had this USDA Farm and Ranch Land Protection Program funding, 11 of those have been in Redhook, bringing about $4 million of USDA funding to the Town of Redhook for those projects for about $800 million, or excuse me, $800 million, $8 million, I'm just saying there, $1 million total moving upward. These would also be conservation easements, numbers 25 and 26, I think, in the Town of We've noted to the Town Board previously that these projects are coming again in the context of a partnership that includes Dutchess Land Conservancy, Sinek Hudson, the Town of Redhook, and the USDA Farm and Ranch Land Protection Program. The USDA FRPP Program has awarded, and we are in the process of a cooperative agreement with the USDA for the funds for these two projects in the Town of Redhook, along with seven others in Columbia County. I wish that I could give more detail on that and tell you that we had that cooperative agreement signed. However, we received it and we signed it one week before the federal shutdown last week, and so it is, has not yet been returned to us. But we have all confidence that once things are up and running again with that cooperative agreement, it will be signed and returned back to us as these were 2013 project dollars. So to this farm particularly, we estimate that the acreage is 74, and that is a pretty sound number based on the GIS data and the tax parcels, at a cost of $5,800 per acre for the purchase of the conservation easement, with a $451,500 total cost for acquisition. We propose a 25% share from Sinek Hudson, a 25% share from the Town of Redhook, and a 50% share from the USDA FRPP Program. That is the maximum that that program will contribute to a project, and that is what they have awarded to this project. We also estimate the project costs for appraisal, survey, filing fees, title insurance, the baseline documentation report, stewardship endowment, for a total on this farm of $20,970. And as we've done in the previous past, unfortunately, the USDA program does not cover any of these project-related costs, and so we would request that the town participate in sharing in these costs at 50% of the funding with the Dutchess Land Conservancy and Sinek Hudson to make up the other 50%. This is a total project cost, and on my paper, but I know it's in the resolution, a total project cost to the town of approximately $125,000, including the estimated legal counsel for the town on this project.
Yeah, that would be $127,360.
Thank you. No, this is not that good technically in my head. I had them, as you see on the sheet, I have them combined for both projects together. That is part parcel, again, as you see it, for a total cost that includes the Close Farm to come after this one in the coming period. I will note that on some of these costs, we do know that there has been some cost savings. This was not updated for a very recent note, that the survey cost will be about $5,500. So there's some costs we know that will already be less. And once the survey is complete, we will have a final purchase price, but not to exceed $451,500. That is in on the numbers in general. And I'll note that we're past our time, I apologize. Then we will defer down to that.
So I think at this point, I'd like to move on to the comment from the public, if there is any. I mean, this is explained so well, I can't say I got too many questions, but.
I don't know if in this instance I'm considered public or as the Chair of the Community Preservation Fund, but I'm delighted that we started this meeting with Ruth O'J, who wrote the Open Space Plan from which this plan for conservation was derived. And I believe that Community Preservation Act was put into law using the Open Space Plan as its initial project plan. This particular parcel brings us back down to the southwest in that crescent of farms which are the, were the impetus for preservation. And these two projects, I believe, bring the total amount of preserved farmland in Redhook to very close to 5,000 acres, or about over 50% of the total operating farms in Redhook.
Well, it seems like I always have to make a comment of some sort.
That's okay, Ken.
Is that enough? Anyway, Kasicki Farm, and then any of the other farms that were being, that are being considered for the development rights that we're talking about. Several factors come to my mind about these properties. I look at it like, well, relative to agriculture, how has this farm or this land been used in the past? Has it been sitting idle? Has there been active products grown on there? Livestock on the property? And in addition, I'd like to look at it like, where's this land going to be tomorrow? And who's going to maintain it? And I'd just like to say, relative to the Kasicki Farm project, I'm sure you all know where it is, you've driven by it, and been active in observing it, but there is a real pure example of pure agriculture that's taking place, from livestock to crops, anything else that's relative to agriculture. It's not just sitting idle, it's been a very active piece of property. And it contributes a great deal to the community. I'd just like to end saying that I think you've addressed a very important piece of land in the Town of Redhook, and we need to support it in a way that's constructive and will be beneficial, not only to the landowner, but to the public in Redhook. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Any other comments on this particular? Yes, Robert?
I should have been smart enough to go before Ken, because he covered many of the points that I wanted to make, but I wanted to echo the same sentiment that he did. We talked about the resources or carry-in, and Art talked about the resources on the property, and they are terrific, but it's a canvas. And you know, this is a canvas that's been around, in the case of my farm and these farms we're talking about, since before the Revolutionary War. And that canvas has been painted upon, if you will, or operated by very talented people and people who work extraordinarily hard, and in many cases have sustained surprising and unanticipated losses, and have gotten back up and have reinvented or recreated their farm operations. And I think when you look at the Bosbergs, and you look at the Mojers, and you look at Ken Miglarelli here, and certainly the closest, you see these properties being operated by responsible people who are both creative and talented and hardworking, and they're really the original preservationists, if you will, folks like myself and organizations like Sinek Hudson and Dutchess Land Conservancy came after that. But they deserve a tremendous amount of credit as well. I mean, DLC, nobody knows their stuff better than DLC. They've worked diligently and very hard for this town. Sinek Hudson, you can't say enough about this organization. If they have to put their gloves on, they will in order to protect this Hudson Valley, but certainly they're incredibly smart. They brought the Secretary of Agriculture here, gave a handheld tour of the properties a few years back, showed them what local farming looked like in the Northeast and why it was important to expend dollars, not only throughout the country, but in this region in particular. And I think that they're a champion. And certainly thanking all of you, the four of you, I know Sue had to refuse herself, but thanking her as well, and the voters of Redhook who came out to vote this revenue source. No pain, no gain. We felt the pain, you know, years ago, back in 2007, but here we are, we're seeing the fruits of those mechanisms. And I wholeheartedly support both of these applications and the people who've made it possible.
Would any, one else from the public like to comment? Ken?
Hey, Ken. Ken Miglarelli. I was asked by the Bosberg family to talk on behalf, but I can just as easily talk about the Close family also. This actually pushes us well over 3,000 acres now preserved in the town, and I thank the Town Board and the people of the town. The $3.5 million bond that we floated, what, 10 years ago, was it? And the CPF Fund. What that shows is our commitment to preserving farmland. And also organizations like Sinek Hudson, and DLC, and Winnicke, and the county, the state, and the USDA, I don't think would have put up their monies if the town didn't start the ball rolling. So it gave the town actually a bigger bang for its buck, bringing all these extra funds to preserve open space. And the Bosberg lands, you know, being next to the Kalina Farm, just the vistas driving down Rockabye and Middle Road will be there for many generations. And again, I thank the Town Board for supporting us.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone else?
I'll just talk quickly since I'm here. I'm Darrell Mojer, excuse me, and I'm very supportive of the Kasicki Farm having their development rights conserved. It is a great property. I've known the family for over 40 years, I've known the property very well. We've talked about the view shed, we've talked about the active agriculture that's involved in the property at present. in the property at present, and in the spirit of everything we've done, I think this really meets the bill. One last point, I was glad to hear the resolution for Ruth O'J. I was on the Conservation Advisory Council with her the first year, and she convinced my daughter to get one of those scholarships, the Conservation Scholarships, and she stayed with it, and she's finishing her PhD now, natural resources.
Thank you, Darrell. Anyone else like to add to the comments? There being none, and Susan, would you like to say anything else? You've kind of explained your position, but I thought you might want to just add a little bit.
Well, specifically the, specifically the criteria that the Community Preservation Fund considered with particular reference to the Kosiki Farm, they noted that it had both agricultural role and water resources, particularly the fact that it was over a Zone One and Zone Two aquifer recharge zones, that 63% or more was of the soils were prime soils or statewide significance. We also noted that it included some valuable forest zones, and that as contiguous to the Kalina Farm, it was ranked as a Rank II in the CPF rankings. So we were very pleased that this farm came before us to request the Community Preservation Fund monies and support the application.
Thank you again. Larry, I know you just walked in, we're having a public hearing on the Kosiki Farm, did you want to add any comments?
Probably not Kosiki.
Okay, yep. All right, if there are no other comments from the public, I might ask the board if they'd like to add anything, otherwise we're going to the resolution and the seeker. You guys ready to?
Oh, yeah. Now we've said our piece.
Okay, good. And you've all reviewed the short environmental assessment form?
Could you look to go through the short form? This is actually a new short form.
Oh, this is a new short?
You haven't seen the board. And we appreciate Art's assistance in providing the underlying information for the form. And if you had an opportunity to look at this one in advance, which I think that you did, this goes through the acreage, which Art just talked about, and the types of land uses in the area, agricultural and rural, residential. And then it is consistent with zoning regulations in the area, the action anyway, the proposed action, which is the acquisition of the conservation easement, consistent with the predominant character of the landscape and the other considerations. The proposed action doesn't involve actual physical activity on the site, it's not in an historic district area, not in an archeologically sensitive area, to the best of our knowledge. I do note that it is, as Art pointed out, there are wetlands in the area, and there are, there are, let's see, I think there are no other significant issues identified. So this form then has a Part Two attached to it, similar to the old backside of the short form, and the Part Two has somewhat different questions, which are intended to delve a little more deeply than the old short form into whether or not we need to do a further environmental review. So if you turn your attention to page three, the review of those questions all indicate no or smaller impact, material conflict with land use policies, intensity of land use change, appear of the character or quality of existing community, adverse changes in traffic, energy use, water supply, wastewater treatment, importance of historic archeological resources, adverse change in natural resources, increase potential erosion, and hazard to environmental resources, human health. Those are the items on this new form that are yes or no questions to consider when you're thinking about whether or not you need a further study or further environmental review, more extensive environmental review. So then we have Part Three prepared for review, which is referred to in the resolution, the determination of significance language, that the proposed action will preserve agricultural land and natural resources by the acquisition of a perpetual conservation easement that preserves the property for agriculture. Preserving the property with a perpetual conservation easement is likely to have a net benefit for habitat, fauna, and species, and that would be the lead agency. You have a resolution which is proposed, and I think you all have a copy of that, adopting a secret determination of non-significance for the purchase development rights for the Kosiki Farm, and having reviewed the environmental assessment form with respect to the 74-acre parcel, we have a resolution. Would you like me to read that, just the resolved portion of that?
Just the, yeah, just the last two paragraphs essentially?
Right. So now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Board hereby adopts a negative declaration based on findings of inclusion relating to probable environmental effects contained within the attached DAF, including Parts Two and Three thereof, concluding that the acquisition of development rights in the parting disguise above will not have an adverse effect on the environment, and authorizes the supervisor to execute the AAF in accordance with the applicable provisions of law. Be it further resolved that the Town Board authorizes the supervisor to take such further steps as might be necessary to distract the agency's responsibilities for this action. So this would require a motion and a vote then.
I saw move as outlined by the Attorney for the Town.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, would you like us to have a roll call vote on this, Chris?
Yes, please.
We'll start with Bill and move down the line.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
And we'll note, to the record again, that Supervisor Ken is recused from that vote.
Okay.
And next we have a resolution, which you also have granting approval for the use of money in the Community Preservation Fund for the purchase of development rights of the Kosiki Farm. And again, Kerry and Art have reviewed the details of the proposal, so I'll just summarize the Wider House portion. This is the 74-acre parcel at Rockabye Road, and the purchase pursuant to the Community Preservation Fund is under the Chapter 57 of the Town Code. The town's adopted a community preservation project plan. The CPF Board has reviewed the proposal and recommended the allocation of monies from the CPF Fund, as Susan mentioned. Sinek Hudson has presented a proposal for the sale of development rights at a purchase price, an estimated purchase price of $430,000, and that's the purchase price only, supported by self-contained appraisal reports from James Waterhouse, and that the town has, you know, adopted its NIDDEC for an enlisted action. The proposal is to enter into an agreement with USDA Farm and Ranch Tax Protection for 50% of the acquisition cost, with Sinek Hudson funding 25% of the acquisition cost, and the town funding 25% of the acquisition cost. Other related project costs to be provided, shared between the town and DLC slash Sinek Hudson. DLC would be the holder of the conservation easement. The town and USDA would have third-party enforcement rights, meaning the town would be in a position to enforce if, for some reason, it felt that the monitoring agent, DLC, was not complying with the provisions of the agreement. And the resolution is as follows. The Town Board, the Supervisors hereby authorized and directed to execute a conservation easement, providing for DLC as grantee, together with a monitoring agreement, providing for monitoring and stewardship activities by DLC and such other documents necessary in connection with such agreement. Such agreement shall be in substantially the form of file with a clerk for substantial changes as may be approved by the supervisor. Be it further resolved that the offices of the town are duly authorized and directed to consummate the funding of the purchase of development rights with respect to the partial through the application of funds for such purchase purpose from the CPF, with an estimated total town cost of $127,360, and to take all action necessary in connection therewith. With such funding to be concluded within 12 months of the date hereof, unless an extension is approved in discretion of the Town Board.
Thank you for, I mean, Chris, thank you for giving that synopsis and reading the resolution, and...
Again, I saw move as outlined exactly by the Attorney for the Town, that resolution.
Thank you, Bill. Kerry, you want a second?
I'm second, I'll second.
Any further discussion by the board? There being none, we'll take another roll call vote. Starting with Bill.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, we've done the seeker, we've approved the funds for the Kosiki development right purchase. Thank you very much, guys, I'm gonna get to move on to the next.
One down.
And thank you, Frank.
We turn to the agenda. We're looking at item number four, I believe now. All I have to do is find the agenda. So, item number four is a public hearing to consider the Close Family Farm, and would the town clerk please read the resolution?
Well, the resolution...
For the, I'm sorry, the...
Well, we already read the public hearing notes, it was one public hearing, not both.
Oh, okay, very good, okay, so we're way ahead of us.
We're way ahead.
It was...
I wasn't here, I couldn't know.
And for note of the record, I believe that when Art and I spoke last time, I didn't properly introduce myself, so my name is Kerry Watkins Bates with Sinek Hudson, and in a very quick recap, we're so thankful for these partnerships and so much of what everybody, including the town voters and the Town Board and the land trusts and the county and the state and the federal government, has amounted to a really incredibly successful program for farmland preservation in the town of Red Hook, which is paralyzed, paralleled by only a few places in the state, and that's mostly Arman Island, but a single town doing this much is really, really impressive and shows incredible leadership from the town and from everyone who works here to make this happen. We will talk about the resources of the Close Family Farm located on Echo Valley Road, and as we did, go over the numbers.
All right, the Close Family Farm property is 103 acres, and it's located on Echo Valley Road, just to the east of the village of Red Hook. The, as far as the resources on the property go, there are approximately 44%, or just a bit, just a bit under 50 acres of the property are prime or statewide important farmland soils, and that includes an area of prime soils that are in the center of the property, and large areas of pasture and areas on both sides of Echo Valley Road. Now, the water, the water resources are very extensive on the property, and they include 60 acres of Zone One aquifer, which doesn't show up so well on this map, but most of, a good deal of the property, and then 21 acres of Zone Two aquifer recharge area. Most importantly, the whole southern area of the property is bounded by or along the Sawkill Creek. There's over 2,000 linear feet of frontage on the Sawkill Creek. There are six acres of DEC and eight acres of federal wetland, and there are 40 acres that lie within the 100-foot floodplain on the property. And the property was designated as a zone, as a number one level priority in the conservation priority plan, in part because of the farming resources, and also in part because of the property's location on the Sawkill Creek, especially in relation to the village of Red Hook's water supply.
I'll just note, I'll just hold this map up for anybody who can't see it, when Art was identifying the Zone One aquifer, which doesn't show on the large map, it's everything in the light yellow on this map.
Which is a big part of the reason why this was identified as an important property in the plan. Now, moving to the proposed conservation easement that we worked in negotiation with the family on, we have established a, buffering the wetlands and the Sawkill Creek, we've established a resource protection area along the southern area of the property, and then there are, there's a farmstead complex that covers approximately six acres of land, all surrounding the existing complex of buildings in which there are several barns, and there are actually three existing residential structures that fall within the farmstead complex already. And then to the north of Echo Valley Road, there is a secondary farmstead complex that is limited only to, only to agricultural structures, I believe to a barn, or, but at least only to agricultural structures. And this is a very, this, the type of plan that we're looking for when we do this is to allow flexibility for farming in the future while keeping the development as close, as closely compact and clustered as possible, so...
So I'll draw your attention to, again, the last page in your packet of materials of the maps, which outlines the project cost, and I'll note, as I did before, that this shows both the cost of the Kosiki Farm and the Close Farm, and in the total project cost box at the bottom, combined them both. We estimate the acreage of the farm, as Art had noted, to be just about 103 acres. We will have a complete boundary survey done, but that is not yet completed at this time. The purchase price, based on the appraisal, is $6,000 per acre, for a total of $650,000, including a 5% contingency, because we don't yet know the final acreage of the property. We propose, as we did with the Kosiki Farm and with those, with the nine previous that we've matched with USDA funding, that 25% of the funding shall come from Sinek Hudson Land Trust, that another 25% be requested of the town for the acquisition, and the USDA has committed 50% of the funding, which is the maximum amount available under the USDA Farm and Ranch Tax Protection Program. As we noted before, project-related costs are not covered by the USDA FRPP program, and so we are requesting that the town share in that cost, and those costs at 50%, for a total of just about $11,000. Those costs include appraisal survey, filing fees, item insurance, baseline documentation for stewardship endowment, and as I just noted, for about $11,000, about 15 when we include four town legal costs. So the two of those together is just about $173,500 for a total commitment from the town. Together with the Kosiki Farm, that is a total town commitment of just over $300,000, about $305,000, and a total project cost of about $1.15 million. So as, I'll note, as has been brought up before, that these projects represent an incredible opportunity to leverage both our, the land trust, and other nonprofit dollars, with the town's available funding through the Community Preservation Fund to the federal dollars, and in a, in a scenario that's been very beneficial to all of us. By partnering together, we've certainly been able to do so much more than any one of us could have done individually, and I think that these two, which I know would be the 10th and 11th project to be funded by the FRPP in the town of Red Hook, just have come at such a much more incredibly fast pace than others that we've done in the past. So I think that is a very successful model, and welcome your consideration of it.
Thank you, Kerry, and thank you, Art. Thank you, Art. So, having heard the proposal before us, shall we hear the public, oh, you've said, sorry, you've said. Do you have a recommendation for us? Susan.
The Joint Community Preservation and Farmland Protection Meeting Committee met on September 5th to consider the Close Farm application. There were four members at that meeting, Brent Kopaczek and Mick Lee O'Reilly, Mary Ann Johnson and myself. And having considered the materials that were presented by Sinek Hudson and looking at where this particular parcel is in the Community Preservation Fund listing, we approved it without reservation. The Close Family Farm is a Rank 1 farm. There are only four other parcels in the Community Preservation Plan that have aggregate scores higher than this farm. So, we are thrilled that the Close Family came forward to offer the parcel for preservation. We find that it provides, that it represents unique preservation opportunities. It's an actively farmed parcel consisting of just over 103 acres, of which just under 50% is either prime soils or soils of statewide significance. It's currently actively used to raise sheep. The trails that run through the property are considered a priority too in the Town of Red Hook Open Space Plan. In addition, it sits on Zone 1 and 2 aquifer recharge zones and is part of the Sauk Hill watershed. It includes state and federal wetlands and FEMA floodplains. Overall, the property is very high, as they said, in the, in the preservation rankings and offers one of the most memorable scenic views along Echo Valley Road, and we're thrilled to recommend it.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you and the committee for your work. Okay, so the next step is the EAF, the short. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Guess that would be appropriate, public comment. Anyone? Who's going first? Thank you.
Go to the microphone.
Yes, please. Would you please say your name for the public, for the record?
My name is Michael Robertson. I, I own the property to the north that adjoins the Close Family Farm. I've had it for three years. My farm has a conservation easement on it with Sinek Hudson. And I can tell you that without that easement, I wouldn't currently be standing before you farming that land. So, it's really exciting for me to see that the Close Farm could share the same future that my farm shares. I think that the sort of farming that we do in the Northeast, specialty crops on small farms that goes directly to local consumers, really depends upon a high level of visibility, upon the preservation of farms that people have access to and requires transparency of our practices. The challenges that we're, that we've, we're faced working on small farms requires that we have neighbors that are also farming, the sharing of equipment, of ideas and of resources. So, having a farm that's right next to mine, farmed by good people, certainly will benefit my business and will benefit the community of Red Hook. So, I think it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment, please?
Larry Thudford, 228 Spring Lake Road, Red Hook. As has been so aptly demonstrated, that the Close Farm really represents a lot of significant priorities, which are critical to farmland protection. The farm is not only a very productive farm, but you would also be preserving a very historic and scenic farm. So, I would very much encourage you to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thudford. Further comment?
Hi, Robert McKean. Just a couple more thoughts after my comments earlier regarding the Kasicki Farm. And I apologize for not recognizing Michael Robertson as one of the farmers in the room earlier. He's done a terrific job with his farm, the Sauk Hill Farm. They have a farm store there, you should visit it, it's very charming. And the other farmers in Red Hook, who I did not mention as well. Just very quickly, who pays with the CPF? It's a fund, to remind folks at home, that is paid into by purchasers coming into our community. The reality is, most of the dollars come from the riverfront estates who pay a surcharge above and beyond the median sales price in the county. Who benefits? Well, you know, lots of folks benefit. Obviously, the farmers do, they have money to plow back into their operations, which is generally what happens. The people in the community by preservation, they benefit. They have farmers who are selling them local goods, they know the farmer, they get to know the product. It's all about food security at the end of the day, isn't it? Next week, they're going to be talking about our indebtedness down in Washington. Well, certainly, we don't want to add to that by being beholden to other countries for our food source. So, this is all about food security. The people in Red Hook who own property, they benefit because our community is much more attractive, valuations are supported by this type of work. And certainly, the children of Red Hook will get to visit many of these farms and participate. If you talk to families who have lived in Red Hook a lot longer than I have, they will tell you many of their memories were created on a family farm here in Red Hook. So, I want to thank the Closes for a tremendous legacy here for Red Hook and certainly the people in town and yourselves for your support.
Any further public comment? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment period and proceed.
Okay, now.
Now.
You have before you another short farm and ground assessment form prepared for this project, 103 acres. It's, it's very similar to the other project. I would note, we do have one adjustment to make on page two, some item 16. We have to make a correction that it is located, a significant portion of the site is located within the 100-year floodplain.
In the one?
Within the 100-year floodplain. So, I'd like you to check yes there. Otherwise, I think this is essentially the same as Art noted, this is.
That was item number.
Item number 16. On page two.
Mm-hmm, got it. Okay.
And as he noted, this is in a, a D E C wetland and a Sauk Hill Creek here, which are significant assets. And again, we have part two with the impact assessment and no impacts identified. And the same essential determinations of significance, preserve agricultural land and net benefit. And so, that's the, the resolution adopting a secret determination, includes that negative declaration, includes that the art of development rights do not have to affect the environment.
Okay, thank you, Christine.
I so move that resolution along the lines spelled out by our attorney for the town.
Mr. Second? Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Then we have a resolution, proposed resolution for adding approval for the use of money from the CPF for the purchase of development rights of the Close Farm, the same provisions that we summarized earlier, except that in this case, we have 108, excuse me, 103-acre parcel at Echo Valley Road. The estimated acquisition cost total is $619,000, acquisition cost only, not project cost, supported by, in this case, a restricted use appraisal report, again, from Waterhouse. And again, the 50%, 25-25 split proposed for the acquisition cost and the sharing of the other related project costs with Sinek Hudson and the town and D O C, monitoring to be provided by D O C. So, the resolution is, again, the same resolution to authorize the supervisor to execute conservation easement and monitoring agreement and to authorize a continuation of funding of the purchase of development rights, estimated total town cost of 177,435, as written.
Thank you, Christine. I'd like to move the resolution.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Congratulations.
Come from the worst team, say thank you. Next year, I hope the whole town board comes forward.
We're going to have to not schedule it on a town board meeting night. It's a tough one to do. But we, but we knew that you had a good mail. I had already gotten good word on that, and I'm so glad. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Harry, and thank you, Art, specifically.
So. Once again, we're in your debt. Thank you for staying up for us.
Our pleasure.
Okay. The fifth public hearing, which is running somewhat late, but still important, is a public hearing regarding proposal, which I have just received the engineering report on, for the community development block grant application for the town of Red Hook. And you can see that the engineer, Brandy Nelson from Crawford and Associates, has reviewed the proposed scope of work that we have considered for new sidewalks along Route 9 from the town hall southward. Utilizing Department of Transportation item numbers and region eight costs where available, we prepared a preliminary construction estimate. The estimate shows a $150,000 budget will cover installation of approximately 900 linear feet of sidewalk, including 10% construction contingency and approximately $20,000 for survey, engineering, permitting, DOT coordination and construction management. The 900-foot installation will stretch approximately to Metzger Road. And you can see in the attachment, the associated budget that Brandy has prepared. So, I would like to have the clerk read the notice, please.
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the Town of Red Hook on October 8th, 2013 at 8:45 PM local time at the town hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. To hear all interested persons regarding the 2014 community development block grant application. Input from citizens and groups is solicited regarding the town's application. The project being considered is the construction of a sidewalk along the east side of South Broadway in the town. The maximum grant to be applied for is $150,000. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the town board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the town board of the Town of Red Hook dated September 25th, 2013, Sumacan Town Park, Town of Red Hook, and that was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal, the Freeman, posted on the town website, posted to town hall and emailed to the two villages.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
So, I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Is there any comment, any public comment? Seeing none, I would just like, for the record, to refer to two letters received in regard to this proposal. One was received, was sent on September 12th, received on September 13. And it is a letter with concerns about the application. And it is from business owners and residents opposed to the mentioned sidewalk, and they list the various reasons. The second is a letter from a proponent of the community development block grant proposal listing seven items. And this will be on file with, both of these will be on file with the town clerk, for anyone who is interested in reading them. And this is citing all of the reasons that this is an attractive application. So, we have written documents, and I guess I would like to leave the public comment open long enough for the board to weigh in, if we could. Do you have any comments? You don't have to make comments, but if you do, I'd welcome them.
No, I mean, I've looked at the letters pro and con that were submitted and the documents from the engineer. And I understand that the county and the state have met with our engineer and, of course, favor the proposal. The numbers seem to come in at 150,000. And so, I'm prepared to approve the resolution.
Okay.
You know, I think this is, this is an important addition in terms of pedestrian safety and the public and the community and will work in concert with the zoning that we recently passed in, in the context of T N D. So, it is just a natural evolution of how the community will move forward.
Thank you. Harry, Brendan?
Well, it's in keeping with our energy and climate action plan as well, I might mention. And both the Conservation Advisory Council and the Trails Committee are very much in favor of this.
And Jim?
Yeah, it seems like a good idea to me, but I would like us to try and have a discussion with the Save Our Town Committee, who presented the letter of opposition. Be nice if we sat down and discussed with them and find out exactly what, what their feelings on, you know, why they are opposed to it. Because I, I'd like them to explain to us how they feel the negatives outweigh the benefits. And I.
Do you intend to meet with them, then, the next meeting?
Yeah, if we could maybe just respond to this, ask them if they would like to come and if, I don't know why, they, any one of them who signed this letter that they submitted to us, one hand, I'd just see if they'd like to come and explain, you know, their thoughts on the sidewalk.
So, you're going to take that to the committee in the next time they meet? As their liaison?
The Save Our Town Committee, but I guess.
Do you not?
I will speak, I have not spoken to them about this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay.
When is our deadline?
Um, it's very soon. The 20th of September, or of October, I think. I think it's the 20th. So, we don't, we don't have a lot of, yeah, we don't have a lot of time to, to discuss. I personally am more interested in public safety where this sidewalk is concerned. I've walked that route to the Hardscrabble Commons and, and it is, in my opinion, it is in dire need of sidewalks on the east side of Route 9 as well as the west side. I know that more and more people are using the west side, but that doesn't negate the fact. fact that, that a lot of traffic goes to the east side down into the Hardscrabble Commons area, and young people are walking there after school, and young people are walking there after sports, and older people like to go to that area as well for multiple reasons. And I just think the public safety is the, is the largest benefit to having this sidewalk on that stretch of very busy highway. So I guess I'd like to move the resolution authorizing the submission of application for the fiscal year 2014 Duchess County Community Development Block Grant. Whereas the town is participating in Duchess County Community Development Consortium for the fiscal year 2014, public hearing was held tonight after due notice, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf or in opposition of said proposed local law. Whereas input from citizens and groups have been received and considered, whereas an application has been prepared with addresses, which addresses our community concerns, and whereas it is in the best interest of the town of Red Hook to submit the fiscal year 2014 Community Development Block Grant application for the town described as follows, the grant application, "Construction of a sidewalk along the east side of South Broadway. Maximum amount of the grant to be applied for $150,000." And I did not close the public hearing, did I?
Thank you. I was just going to ask you before...
I just, as I, as I was moving the resolution, I realized that I've been on left foot tonight, all night. I'd like to close the public hearing. Now...
Do you want to move that in?
I would like to move that resolution and ask for a second.
Move the hearing or second that?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Procedurally, thank you. Go ahead.
Shall I read it all over?
No.
I didn't think so.
I've memorized now.
Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the Town of Red Hook that the town board authorizes the supervisor to execute and submit the grant application in a maximum grant amount of $150,000 for 2014 construction of a sidewalk along the east side of South Broadway. The officers, employees, and agents of the town are hereby authorized and directed for and in the name of and on behalf of the town to do all acts and things as may be necessary or in the opinion of the officer, employee, or agent acting desirable and proper to the effect, the purposes of the foregoing resolution. I so move.
Second.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to take a roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. And the resolution shall take effect immediately. Now, I think we're really close to doing, including what we have to do here tonight. There is a correspondence file for you to review various items, and we have, Bill, just to remind you, we have the agenda for the next meeting, the October meeting, the fourth Wednesday. I'd like to have that discussion that may go before the zoning review committee, if you have called that meeting together. Will we be able to do it on that, that night, or are they not meeting before then?
I've sent the emails, but I'll follow up with phone calls.
Okay. Will you let me know so I know whether, let me know so I know whether to put it on the agenda? And the farm fences as well.
Farm fencing and the permitting on filming.
Yes, yes, those two, those two issues. And Christine, if you have the information ready and available for the width of road considerations, we'll put that on the agenda as well. So I believe that's a work in progress.
Yeah, I'm going to have to talk to Shelley about that, too.
Okay, anything else? I don't have anything else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, I wanted to make a couple of comments.
Okay. That's what I'm waiting for.
I don't want to take up everybody's time, but...
That's okay.
Well, first of all, I think I want to follow up on what was said in the public hearing, just to make sure that everybody in the Town of Red Hook knows, all of our citizens, that the town board acknowledges, you know, when we talk about purchase of development rights and funding the purchase of development rights through the Community Preservation Fund, that money comes from someplace. And I think, real quickly, it's important that the town board, on behalf of the citizens of Red Hook, thank, you know, in different order, the clerk of Duchess County and his staff who collects all this money, the lawyers and the realtors in the Town of Red Hook and their surrounding areas who arrange for this special surcharge or tax, and then, of course, lastly, the more affluent citizens of our community who, because they purchased property which is in excess of the median price, are contributing to this fund and have contributed substantial amounts of money, and it does not go unnoticed by the town board. And all of us applaud everyone who comes to this community. Of course, we understand that perhaps by investing in the Town of Red Hook and paying into this tax, they're obtaining an atmosphere, a character in this town, which is, which is what they're looking for and which would cause them to choose to live in the Town of Red Hook, where we protect our land maybe more than some other towns. The second thing is, more personal note, that, again, a small town, I think of, of the play "Our Town" that was, was performed here in Red Hook over the years, the original play, and a guy, Woody Close, who was a participant. Woody Close, who represented the Town of Red Hook in the county legislature, was always a force in our community, helped create the original farmland protection plan. Everybody knows, I'm sure, the reputation of late Woody Close. But tonight, when we, when we choose to fund the development rights on the, on the Close Farm, it's very difficult in this building to not think of the memory of Woody Close. And lastly, there's a new soul in our midst, a new grandchild in my family, in the extended family, born early this morning in Chicago.
Oh, yeah. Was that that phone call you were...
The significant thing is, it's my wife Jean's first grandson, but his name is Hudson, the claim reality. And so I'm thinking someday, maybe he'll return to the Hudson Valley, for which he's named, and maybe he'll run for the town board. In any event, there's a new soul in our midst.
That deserves applause.
Very nice, very nice. Congratulations.
Give us a way out, buddy.
Anyone else?
That's hard to follow.
That is very hard to follow, yeah. I, I'm glad you highlighted the early work of the Farmland Protection Committee because it, it goes to Ruth OJ and Beth Mead and, and Marcia Pell, who worked together on that original open space plan, and while they were doing that, they recognized that farming is Red Hook's industry. And if we were to have represented adequately in that open space plan, the major industry in Red Hook, we needed farmers on that. We needed a farmer-represented committee to speak to the town board. They knew how to keep their industry alive. And it was through those three women that we developed the Farmland Committee, the Ag and Open Space. It started out as an ag committee, and it was largely people just wrestling with, how do you help farmers? What are their problems? And how do we get them to succeed in what they do? And nobody could cut the hours that they spent short, but we could try to support them in various ways. And Jim and I were on that early town board that many, lo, that many years ago. So this goes way back, and, and you're quite right that Woody chaired the first agriculture committee for the town, and he was able to, as he often did, bring energy to a group of people as they wrestled with, how do we do this, and what, what's our purpose, and what's our mission, and how do we influence the town board, some of whom really aren't particularly interested in another committee. And he brought very interesting people together to talk about, you know, the, the importance of agriculture, long before we recognized that agriculture was at risk. So I, I really appreciate, because he was your friend and my friend and our family's friend and all of Red Hook's friend, I really appreciate your thinking of him tonight because Ruth OJ and he really were the leaders of, of much of this effort, and we do well to remember them both. Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion unless somebody else wants to say wonderful words about farming in Red Hook.
I move it.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.